Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome. And I'm calling to order the Common Council of the City of Gladstone, July 14th, 2015. It is now 6:30 PM. Jolene, will you do the roll call, please?
Counselor Sickman.
Here.
Counselor Merschel.
Here.
Counselor Johnson.
Here.
Counselor McMahon.
Here.
Counselor Reisner.
Here.
Mayor Jacobella.
Here. If you'll all will join me, please, in the place of allegiance. (inaudible) allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and as to the republic for which it spans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Before we move to business from the audience, I think the interim city manager, Russ Schultz, wanted to change the agenda item or move agenda item?
Yes, I'd like to modify the agenda, if I may. I'd like to pull item number nine. Staff is not ready at this time. We'll talk about that next time.
Okay. We're removing item number nine.
Thank you.
Come to the discussion.
That does it.
Just with the nine, yeah. Okay. And now we're going to take some business from the audience. Jolene, can you-
Natalie Smith come up?
Natalie Smith, 345 West Dartmouth Street. Good evening. I'm here on behalf of the Gladstone Community Festival and Oak Grove Rotary to hopefully get all of you to want to participate in our upcoming festival. Whether it's just to show up and enjoy the booth that we have there for everyone, all of the city people that would like to come and meet the community, or get a dodgeball team together, or anything else that you'd like to participate in, they've just asked me to hopefully encourage all of you to want to be a part of the upcoming festival. I also have a schedule of events that I'll give you.
Thank you.
We would like all of you to be there and to participate. Do you have one that I may give on to you?
Okay. Thank you.
And that's all I had, unless anyone has any questions.
I just have a comment. In the booth, Manning, do you guys think it's preferable that we have someone draw up maybe a schedule? Not that we have to absolutely stick to it, but at least we would have coverage for most of it?
Sure.
So there's not six of us from two to three and nobody there from four to seven? Something like that?
And we really hope that you'll, all of you will participate and be there to meet people. We also have a dunk tank this year that we would love to sign up any city councilors and the mayor.
Yeah, that's good. Please sit down.[189.23][189.23](laughter) So we can do this internally? Can somebody do like a spread? You guys are computer geeks. Can somebody do a spreadsheet and get it out for this Manning the booth thing?
I'll do it.
All right? Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, next.
Tim Goodman.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name's Tim Goodman. I'm Director of Government Affairs with Comcast for the Oregon Southwest Washington region. My address is 9605 Southwest Numbest in Beaverton. One thing I'm here to introduce myself is I'm Comcast's new representative to the city with our franchise with you all. And so I wanted to introduce myself quickly here tonight. And then a couple of months ago, Counselor Sickman contacted me about some potential donation possibilities for the city involving movies in the park. And so was able to come up with a little bit of money and wanted to present you all with a check tonight for $1,000 to help towards that. And so I'll give that to you. And then I've got to apologize, I've got to run and go to a city council meeting, City of Tigard, for a franchise renewal over there. But would like to come back and set something up to come back and be on your agenda sometime in the next couple of months and talk about Comcast programs and services and things like that that we have going on that would take more than just a few minutes. So on behalf of Comcast, I'll give this to Counselor Sickman. Let's see what's the one that requested this.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Also something up and come back at a later date and talk about some programs we have for low-income families for broadband and other things like that.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Herman, you filled out a card. Do you want to speak now or in your agenda items?
Jerry? Now it's fine.
Did you want to talk, was this about the agenda item that we have?
No, it's not.
It's something different.
Okay.
Okay. Want to introduce Josh Beckham to you. He's one of the eight young tour guides that have been fully trained to do the river tours and such. We did the first major tour this last week. We have 10 more to do. Wanted you to be aware of that, of the Oak Grove Rotary Club, Oak Grove Gladstone Rotary Club, of which I'm a member, and my organization decided that we'd like to honor Pete Voise, your administrator. And so we did a salmon bake for him a week ago and had a big turnout there. And the folks for the Clackamas Review, Oregon City News, they're doing a series of articles about the work that we do for the community. And he's featured on the front. Wanted you to know that. He helped me a lot during the time that I was working with him over the last six years. And there's been people before him, too. So that's the article and a series of more articles that'll be appearing in the next couple of weeks. We just thought we'd share that with you.
Yeah.
But I'm really proud of this young man because he did the tour guiding along with one other 18-year-old for 40-some people that were on board the vessel, the vessel in that picture, and also the bus tour. And a lot of the storyline has to do with your city. And they did a marvelous job. People really loved it. So that's all I want to share with you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're sticking around for later, aren't you, I hope?
Yes, we are.
All right.
That's it.
That's all?
Yeah, I think there's nothing left, no telling now.
Jolene, and then you can, might as well go right up to the podium, ma'am.
This is Beverly Chase. I'm a member of the Library Foundation, the Gladstone Library Foundation, and we're having our book sale. We start setting up the 29th of July, and the book sale runs Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And I'm hoping I can get some volunteers to help move the boxes of books and either set up on Wednesday or help close up on Sunday afternoon. Most of the members of the foundation are people my age, and we struggle a little with all the books in the bike boxes. And so I was just hoping to get some volunteers.
From the council?
Well, no, from whoever, people here. If you have sons that maybe would like to volunteer, grandsons, whatever, not necessarily the council, but just hoping that there's some people in the community that would like to volunteer. Because all of the funds that we raise in this book sale go to support programs at the library. We're a nonprofit.
If they wanted to volunteer, who would they contact?
They can contact me or Irene at the library could put them in touch with the foundation.
Thank you.
And the dates again, are Thursday, the-
Wednesday, the 29th, Thursday, the 30th, and then the book sale runs through Sunday, and Sunday is, I believe, the 2nd. And we need help because we have to get all the books out of there Sunday afternoon because it's at the school, Wetten Grade School.
So the two primary, the big days are Wednesday getting the books there and Sunday getting the books out?
Yes, yes. And if we could just, you know-
So I'm just trying, because I'll come down and help, but if we could spread the word, it'd be nice to have this kind of dialed in. So Wednesday, what kind of start time are we talking?
We usually start around 9:00 or 10:00 on Wednesday. Whenever they bring the books over from the county shops, that's where they're stored.
Okay, so 9:00 AM down at Wetten?
Mm-hmm.
And then Sunday, what time we-
We start closing up around 3:00 on Sunday. Start boxing books up and getting ready. And we're renting a U-Haul because we found a location where we can take the books, and they will sell them for us. And then we get funds throughout the year that go to help support the program.
All right. Well, we'll try to get the word out.
Okay.
And I think we can probably earmark next year and try to get, maybe as soon as get into newsletter, a month or two in advance and that kind of stuff.
Well, the sale is, I think, in the newsletter, but I don't think we push the volunteer.
Right.
And if we could get some of the high school students, that's what we need, is nice, strong muscles.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for what you do.
Thanks for your patience.
Anything else, Jolene?
Nope, that's all.
Okay. Now we're moving down to regular agenda item number, oh, well, excuse me, I'm sorry, consent agenda. We've got three items, the approval amendments of June 9th, 2015, approval of temporary use of LLC license at the Gladstone Cardroom in Bogies Bar, and number three, we have the payment of the June 2015 claims. Anything? Nobody?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Okay, so motion was made to approve the consent agenda by Counselor Reisner and seconded by Counselor McMahon. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, consent agenda. Oh, there you go. Hasn't been approved. Moving down to correspondence, we don't have any this month. Down to regular agenda at this time, agenda. Item number four, Resolution 10056, authorization to hire an accounting manager.
Yes, sir. Council members, your honor, this basically is an agenda item that would change the approved 2015-16 Gladstone City Budget General Fund Administration Line Four from Assistant City Manager to Accounting Manager. And is what I would propose to do with that, if you pass this resolution, is to hire that accounting manager to work in the accounting department. So it would be slightly less than what you approved in the budget for an assistant city manager. And I've actually included in your amended agenda item packet a salary range description from the city of Fairview, which Fairview's close and comparable besides, so I thought I'd take a look at this. And you see that they have a finance operations manager, and the range is 4706 to 6,006 per month, which is roughly comparable to our Level 31 Step 2. So that's where I would propose to hire that position at, which is less than the assistant city manager that was included in the budget. So with your approval?
I would entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 1056.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Okay. The motion to adopt Resolution 1056 is made by Counselor McMahon, was seconded by Counselor Johnson. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just have a question on the job qualification requirements.
Yes, sir.
You're not listing a CPA or any other specific acronyms for requirements.
Yes, sir.
Is there a reason for that?
It's my opinion, and by the way, I just helped the city of Newburgh recruit their finance director position, which that was a requirement with a four-year degree and a CPA. The starting salary for that position as recruited was $95,000 a year, which is substantially more than what we are recruiting here. I believe that they're qualified people to help you guys out without the CPA designation and without the four-year degree, but yet with strong government accounting and background, which is, once again, staff opinion that you guys need. So I felt that if you ask for extra qualifications like that, you would pay extra money. And I was trying to stay within the budget constraints, so that's my reasoning for not including the letters after the name.
Is the budget constraints, is that hurting the city by not allowing you to hire a CPA?
My opinion, or staff opinion, is it is not.
Any further discussion?
I had a question similar to Counselor Sickman's. I understand what you're trying to accomplish there.
Sure.
And I'm only concerned about, actually, I'm more concerned about what may happen in the future versus what's happening now.
Mm-hmm.
I think you understand the need, even in your short-
Tenure.
-time here. But in the future, if we look at that, it might not be looked at the same way. So I'm struggling a little bit with what to add, if anything. But the one item I had was under the mandatory requirements of, the job descriptions kind of alluded to that, but one of the staunch beliefs is, in my opinion, on accounting, is people understand GAAP, G-A-A-P, General Accounting, Accepted Accounting Principles. And maybe if that was added to that, I think it'd be someplace in the first sentence or whatever, you note something similar to that, that maybe including GAAP or the common GAAP might help note the needs.
I would be pleased to include that in the job description, as well as GAAP, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, and understanding of that acronym as well. If that would be okay?
That's my input.
Okay. I'll be glad to include that in the job description qualifications.
Okay.
I'm just encouraged that we're moving ahead on this position rather than waiting, because I know it's something that's been in need for a while.
Okay, so we had the motion, it was seconded, we had the discussion, all in favor of adopting Resolution 1056. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Resolution 1056 been adopted. Item number five, Resolution Number 1057. Yes, sir.
This one is a little more straightforward. The approved budget had this position in the budget. I've done some review of procedures and work going on out of Public Works, and I think this is one that you guys really need to fill as well. This will run parallel with the accounting manager that you just approved, and we'll recruit the Public Works Director per the job description. I did have one correction I'd like to put in the job description as we speak from talking to various people, that purpose of the position it talks about, responsible for the operation and maintenance of the city's infrastructure, including streets, sanitary sewers, and storm drainage, and surface water systems. And although it's poor grammar, I'd like to add "and" buildings, so that's part of our infrastructure. I'll make the pros a little better there instead of having three ands in a row, but I would like to add that as well.
I would entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1057. So moved?
Second.
Okay, the motion was made by, to adopt Resolution 1057 by Counselor Sickman, was seconded by Counselor Johnson. Discussion? I have a question about, you've touched on this in prior conversations, but why not a professional engineer? That's not one of the requirements here.
I guess I'll put it at my experience level. I think there's a substantial amount of work that needs to be done in the city that doesn't require professional engineering, and I think that's one of those areas that you can hire out and use as much as you need. If you're doing work that doesn't require a PE, then, you know, you don't have to pay for one. If you're using work that requires a professional engineer, you go get one or two or three, and you get the specifics. I think the other issue is you deal with water, sewer, storm, streets, buildings. I think those are all diverse, and a lot of times there's specializations in engineering. And so I really think it would be better to find somebody that could manage those positions instead of having to have the discipline.
Very good. Thank you.
When you added the word buildings or some form to that sentence-
Yes.
I assume, is that you're talking about facility maintenance?
You bet.
Okay.
You know, we own a library, a city hall, a senior center, public works buildings, police station. All of those forms should come under Public Works in planning for future upgrades. I mean, those should all vie together, not individual buildings just kind of going off on their own.
In previous discussions amongst the council, there has been a conversation about hiring a engineer-
Mm-hmm.
-okay, to help reduce the cost. Okay? I haven't heard that yet. I understand, I believe, in our discussion, if you would-
Go through some of that with me?
Yeah, just let people, and maybe you've already done that.
Sure, no, I don't mind. I think that that's optimistic, that's kind of like hiring a city manager that's also going to be your finance manager. I think there is so much work to do in both disciplines that you're going to shortchange yourself on, you know, if you hired a Public Works Director that's also your city engineer, I think your plate is full, and you're going to dilute the workings of both the city engineer and the Public Works Director. And as I alluded to earlier, I think you're going to be better off hiring the city engineering work out so you can pick and choose as much as you need when you need it, as opposed to having that position on staff on a regular basis. So, you know, just my opinion from being around different cities. Does that get to your question, Counselor?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure everybody-
Are you also proposing to use the salary schedule as the Public Works Operations Supervisor from Fairview then? Yes, I'm sorry. I didn't include it in this document, but it's, or in this agenda item, but it was the same schedule, and it looked like it fit really well with our steps, excuse me, our step 51, excuse me, our line 51 stepping up. So we'll be hiring in that range. I'm going to talk to a couple of other Public Works Directors and see what's a reasonable salary to start at. I haven't picked that yet.
Anything else? All right, we had the motion made by Counselor Sickman, seconded by Counselor Johnson. We had the discussion, all in favor of adopting Resolution 1057. Aye?
Aye.
Oh, sorry. All opposed. Now I can, okay. Resolution has been adopted. Okay, item number six, Resolution Number 1058, which is the authorization to extend Earth Crusaders contract until August 28th, 2015. I think that's been amended.
I don't-
And you can address that.
You bet. The amendment's not in the packet, but I would like to amend everything on this agenda item in the staff report that references August 28th to October 14th. So when you make your motion, make it as amended. In talking to a representative of Earth Crusaders, they seem to think that would be enough time to turn the site back over. So with that amendment, I would ask you to go ahead and do your deliberations.
So in that discussion, are we still looking at a potential lawsuit from these individuals?
I don't believe so. I think there's a representative in the audience, if you want to hear from him. I think if we extend that date, perhaps counsel, our attorney might have some sort of a document that we could use to make sure you don't get sued and the disassociation's a clean one from the city and Earth Crusaders.
So what is our attorney's recommendation there?
Glenn Ross, good evening, gentlemen. I'm Paul Osner, Bureau of Osner and Hammond. Glenn Ross and I briefly talked about this today. I suggested having effectively what's called a friendly FED, which is a forcible entry and detainer, which is how, when you have a landlord-tenant relationship or any sort of tenancy relationship, that's how you use a court system to remove that person from possession. What I suggested, and we can include that, is essentially having them agree to this date, and then in order that we have essentially both sides have certainty that they will actually be leaving as of that date, enter into what's called a stipulated judgment. Essentially, that would both begin and end the lawsuit, and such that they would agree that they would leave the premises by that selected date. In that way, you don't have to, if they fail to comply with that time deadline, you then don't have to file the FED and wait through that process yet again. So that's what I suggested as a possible approach, if they felt that that date was, they were comfortable with that particular date. That then mitigates any other problems down the line.
So can we do all that this evening, or do we need to have papers drawn up?
The papers would have to be drawn up, and that can be done since we have a fair amount of time to do that. I mean, since they want to move it to when October 14th, 90 days, basically. We can do that in the intervening period of time, between now and then. But, I mean, that would be, that was the device that I suggested to Ross, we might want to use. Does that all make sense?
Yes. Do we need to do anything here tonight, then, or-
I think that if you hear from, you hear from the representative of the tenant and then giving Ross and I the direction to proceed in that fashion, I think that's really basically all we would need.
Would that need to be amended into the agenda item?
I don't think it would be. No, no. As long as it's, I think I can take the direction of the council.
And it's on the record at this point, so.
Okay, so I'll, I can entertain a motion to adopt- No. We don't want to, yeah, okay. Sorry, go ahead. Entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 1058 as amended, referring to the October 14th, 2015 date.
I'd like to make that motion.
Okay.
Or I'll second it, then.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So the motion was made by Counselor Reisner, and it was seconded by Counselor McMahon. Discussion?
I'd like to know that there's going to be some finality to this, that this is going to come to an end, and that, you know, if our staff is happy, we'll vote in the affirmative for this. But I don't want this to come before the council again. I'd like this to be finished and done, and the staff feel like that's where we're headed at this point.
I think that's where we're headed, but I think it would be well for council to hear from the representative from Earth Crusaders in the audience to see that, you know, he and I talked about the extra date, but we didn't necessarily talk about the stipulated judgment that our attorney has suggested. So maybe if we could hear from him and see if that's acceptable to him, that's your choice, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Herman?
Yes, thank you, counsel. Well, I want to make a couple of comments here. First of all, and Ross and I talked about this, in the document you received, the documentation you received, it talked about the insurance lapsing. The insurance has never lapsed in 23 years. I want to make that clear, because I made that clear to this council on March 10th. Also, that there was dangerous equipment on our site, if shovels and rakes are dangerous equipment, I guess I could remove them, but that's how we do our work. I'm going to have to talk to our council, my council, about this, because I was not aware of quite this procedural thing. It certainly looks like it could be workable, but I need to figure out what the ramifications are to our organization at this time. So that's where I'm at. I can't tell you that I'm in support of it at this point. It certainly sounds like a better direction to go. We would like the record cleared up as to lapse of insurance, which never occurred in 22 years, and also the dangerous equipment issue, if it's possible. Thank you.
So I think from those conversations, staff could work with Earth Crusaders, and, you know, with your passing of this agenda item, you know the parameters in which will work. So that still puts the October 14th date as the final date. It's just whether it goes. It's just whether, it's just whether it goes.
So, what happens if Mr. Herman or his representation says, no, this isn't gonna work, we've passed a resolution, we're already at that point, what does that do to this?
The only thing is, as I would, as I would see it, the only thing that that would do, you would have extended the time to that date, that set date in October. If they failed to leave by that date, we would come back to the council and say, what are your druthers? And, or if they, they haven't made a move to move, say, by sometime earlier than that. We say, do you want us to then commence an action to evict them? And then we would get the council's blessing or not on that particular action, and then we would move forward with filing an FED, which is the way that you would remove them from the premises. All I was trying to do was short circuit the, the timing and just basically file it and then get them to agree to it, and then we just move on.
And the preference would be that the FED would be mutually agreed upon prior to this?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
So, so I just have to back up a little bit?
Sure.
Because the history behind this is that, at least by understanding from the emails that I read, was that we couldn't move them out, basically, and I'm paraphrasing, but your firm said, no, this is, this is the way it's read, and this is what, understand that it's not a five-year deal.
Correct.
So, now, we are now moving even further and trying to come to some happy agreement to this, and there seems to be some pushback. So, and I'll say this, if we think that's gonna happen in October, then why don't we just commence now? You know, and it's a legal question. I mean, is that, are we on ground to say, okay, ninety days, no good, well, you move out when you got the original letter for July thirtieth?
You certainly could. But that's, it's your, it's your choice. I mean, there is, I mean, obviously, there's an expense associated with that if they disagree, and then you may not actually have them out by the time that you thought, and then you, in addition, you've got additional costs. And I will tell you, based on my experience, and you all may know this already, litigation is not the most effective way to resolve disputes. It's not very cost-effective.
And I don't disagree, but you also see the other side of this, that come October fourteenth, and his council says, ah, well, nah, we don't wanna do that.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, a possible compromise. So, why don't you give me two weeks to work with tenant, and if within that two-week period we don't get a stipulated agreement or progress therein, I'll come back to you and say the eviction date will be August twenty-eighth, and we'll move forward that way. If they sign the stipulated agreement, we're out October fourteenth, as stated, and we'll move on in that direction.
That's, that's, that's a, that's a great compromise.
Yeah. So, we're gonna, we're still gonna vote on it? If we vote no, then we'll go back to that plan. Yes, is that how it goes? We made the motion, we seconded, we had the discussion, so now we need to vote on...
You know what? Why don't I just bring this back to you next agenda?
Okay.
And that would make it nice and easy, and it's cleaned up, and you got a clean agenda.
And we'll take the two-week, we'll take the two-week interim period to see whether we can just work this out, and then if we can, then we've, then you'll know that the deal terms will be, you agree to this, you stipulate to a judgment, you, that you vacate by October fourteenth. If you fail to do that, then we will then come back to the council, and the council will then say, okay, you've gotta be out by a date soon as...
August twenty-eighth.
August twenty-eighth, okay. So, for purposes of this meeting, since we've never, I've never polled a resolution, so now that we made the motion, we seconded, we had the discussion, can we just say we're pulling Resolution number one zero five eight?
No, you just, when you extend it to a date certain, you wanna see it again, twenty-eighth of July.
But there's, there's a motion on the table, does it need to be polled first?
Ah, so, I see, yeah.
I moved and I withdraw my motion.
And a withdrawal of the second.
Yeah, what was it? Resolution ten fifty-eight.
You, yeah.
Oh, Pat, the withdrawal.
Okay, all right, so, motion, the motion was made to withdraw the motion to adopt Resolution one zero five eight. It was seconded by Counsel...
You could just table on it.
...Eisner.
Either way.
Seconded by Counsel McMahon, all in favor of moving the motion.
Do we have to vote?
We really don't have to.
Oh, okay. It's withdrawn.
All right, withdrawn.
Yep. Thank you.
Moving right along.
Thank you. Item number seven, Resolution one zero five nine, Resolution authorize staff to begin negotiations with Murray Smith and Associates to complete the city sanitary sewer master plan update.
Yes, sir. I'd like to, to get you to allow me to begin negotiations with Murray Smith. We put this out for a request for proposal, and this has to be done in a two-stage RFP, if you will. We get qualified vendor, and then once we select the vendor, then we do negotiation for the, the work to be done. We had one respondent, so the one respondent is qualified, has done this work, as you'll see from the attached material. So, they're a great, great respondent, but now it's time to negotiate, and I will tell you right now that we're in the neighborhood of about a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and thirty thousand for just their staff time, depending on what, you kinda get to pick and choose what you want in your sewer master plan, and then we'll have to pay some consultants. They've proposed SISL Engineering, they've proposed FCS Group for the financials, so those will also be some components of this plan and process that we'll go through. So, this is just the first step. The contract will come back to you again for your further consideration.
Anyone would like to make a motion to approve Resolution number one zero five nine?
Make a motion to approve Resolution one zero five nine.
Second.
Okay, and the motion was made by Counsel Sickman, was seconded by Counsel Mercierow. Discussion.
The only thing I've got for discussion is that the date on the RFP, I believe, for completion was sometime in, in, uh, July of two thousand and sixteen or whatever. And it was my understanding, you know, we've been talking about this for a long time, in that we originally were working towards a completion of the sewer, master sewer plan to be done this calendar year. And am I off base there, or the understanding I had that Pete had worked with the water systems people and storm sewer people to in fact do some of the flow work, and it was already completed? And so, I'm just kinda mixed up, I guess, at this point.
Well, we lost, we, you were, you not fall off. The problem was, is that we didn't get the, we sent, by the time we sent out the RFPs, that took time, and then by the time we got no response from the RFPs, more time elapsed, and even more time elapsed, and I think that's probably at least five months on when we started talking about it.
Yeah.
So, that's where that five months went out the window. So, this new company would then, they're basically just starting from scratch, and if we were assuming it'd take a year, you could start the clock ticking from now until it gets done. That's where we lost the time.
Well, one of the issues is, I believe, that we're gonna be asked to approve and implement whatever the water plan and the storm sewer plan. And my thoughts are that, you know, we're talking about a heck of a lot of money here, you know, like a hundred and thirty million or something, and to not have the total amounts on the sewer master plan implementation, at least idea, how in the heck do we agree on what the water systems and storm water systems implementation's gonna be? Because that's a big portion of it. Does anybody else feel uncomfortable with that?
There's nothing we can do is the, is the problem there. I mean, it's gonna take them a year to do the project, so it's gonna take them a year, so we're pushed back.
So, we're just gonna approve everything on the water and storm water?
Yeah, if that comes, if that comes up, yeah. And then, we're not gonna start anything until they're all done.
If, if I may, I, you know, the approval of getting the sewer master plan done, and the approval of the water master plan and the storm water master plan, all of those things do not force you to do something so you can therefore time your capital projects and your CIPs to be in the kind of sequence you're talking about. These master plans are really just a no-joke look at what your city needs, and then you guys set the, the, the project priority based on your ability to pay and the other things that are going on in the city. So, I, I think you're concerned about timing issues, and this is more about getting definition to the projects, and then the timing comes at a different point when you all sit down and decide where you wanna put your resources in terms of rates and fees and all of the things you're gonna need to collect to get these projects underway.
Does it have anything?
Uh, no, the only thing is, is I think that we do have a lot of information already done, and maybe that's what Scott was gonna talk about.
I just wanted to add a little clarity, Scott Tabor, Public Works Supervisor, that some of, most of that mapping of inverts on manholes were, I asked to be done because you have a staff out there doing that for the, for the storm system or the storm master plans, it would just made sense to have them just move over to one manhole, and all those inverts have already been taken. I do not believe that we're looking at the magnitude of time that was needed for the storm master plan, because we have a pretty good idea of what size our, our sanitary system is at this time. So, as a matter of timing, I'm not sure, you know, to get it done in two thousand and fifteen is, is gonna do, you're looking at sometime in two thousand and sixteen, but most of that groundwork has been accomplished at this time, that SISL Engineering did for Brown and Caldwell at that time. So, it's, we have that available. I believe that the sanitary master plan would probably go a lot faster because of that data has already been calculated in there.
Thanks. Any other discussion?
Okay, so, now I lost. Somebody made the motion, somebody seconded it. I can't remember who.
I, I seconded.
I think it was down this end.
Made the motion.
And then Mercierow. We had our discussion, so all in, all in favor of approving Resolution one zero five nine, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we've approved Resolution number one zero five nine. All right.
Now, two discussion items. Award contract for the fire station maintenance.
Uh, yes, this item is within my signature authority, I think, and so I therefore will intend to sign it, but I wanted it to come to council to let you know what was going on at the fire station, and they wrote a real nice staff report, so I think this is regular maintenance. My question, when I looked at this and I talked to them about it, was, gee, you got one bid at four thousand eight hundred dollars, and your next bid's at eleven grand, what's the swing there? One is timing, and the people that were qualified that they talked to had other interests, and I think, you know, they're getting the highest return on the time that their people spend. Every, all three of these people have done work for us before, so they're all qualified, and the other ones were doing subcontractors because they were so busy and spread so thin. So, at this point, the forty-eight hundred dollars seems like a pretty reasonable deal.
Okay, and, thank you. Item number ten, Charles McDonald, four five five, Hartford.
Yes, this gentleman came to the city, I believe, back at the end of May, and we granted him an opportunity to have a mobile home occupied, an RV occupied by a resident on his premises. He came back after that permit expired on July eighth and asked that we extend the permit, and we informed him, staff informed him, that it needed to be approved by council. He came back in without having all of the, the code satisfied, and asked that I talk to council about a one-year extension. At this point, I'm not asking anything from council because he didn't finish the code issues, but I'm giving you a heads up that it's out there, and if you wanna talk about it more, I'll be glad to answer any questions you have about it.
He did fix my garage for me, so we'll abstain from anything else.
Any conversation, okay.
So, where, where are we headed with this?
I'm going to respond to him that you had no interest in extending it for a year and that the code wasn't complete, code requirements weren't completed, so, and code always says you can extend it, I think, ninety days. I don't think it gives you the option of a year anyway, so...
All right. Item number eleven, in process for city manager recruitment.
Yes.
Did you pull it nine?
I pulled nine. Yes, sir. See, you got two, Charles. City manager recruitment proposal, last meeting, council appointed a subcommittee to discuss the recruitment of a city manager and the process that we would use to do the recruiting, and how all of that would put together. The committee met and basically thought it was a good idea, it council's pleasure to have a recruiter come in. With that comment, I contacted the city of Hood River, which was the last place I worked, and they recruited a city manager, and plagiarized heavily from them in terms of what process should be followed, and an RFP to go out for a contractor. I think with council's head nod, unless there's some kinda big discussion, we'll get this RFP on the street, hopefully by the end of this week. The committee will, will meet again and decide who to send the RFP to. I've got a list of about fifteen names that Hood River sent theirs to, and kinda what happened. Some of them weren't responsive, some of them chose not to work in the area, but we could certainly send them out that way. So, I guess this is an opportunity for council to, one, discuss whether you wanna use a professional recruiter as the committee is recommending, or, and whether you want the RFP as submitted to go out, modifications, corrections. So, with that, council, have fun discussing.
Well, the committee, we pointed, the committee, they, this is their recommendation, this is what their belief is, so I don't have, you know, just move on, start the process. I agree.
I support that recommendation.
There you go. Short and sweet.
Moving on.
All right. Item number twelve, the tri-city agreement.
The information you have, I think, in the packet talks about ruling at Oregon City and, and what it means in terms of being able to charge franchise fees. This is an opportunity, I too, I suppose, to discuss anything else that's on the tri-city agenda, and there's no resolution involved here, there's nothing that you have to do. It's an opportunity to ask questions and talk about it. So, with that, if you've got a question on what's in the packet or some other topic in the tri-city area, I'll do what I can to...
Mr. Eisner, what is your opinion on this? What are your thoughts on this?
On weather Oregon City, have the right to impose a franchise fee?
Well, yeah, on the court ruling, and what it means to Gladstone.
Well, that might be a bigger answer.
That might be, that, that's a, that's a larger question. I think what it, what it does, what the decision effectively does is confirm the concept that municipalities, like the city of Gladstone, have the authority to impose charges for the use of their right of way. And that authority is grounded in your Home Rule Charter, in the fact that you're a Home Rule jurisdiction. The Court of Appeals has, as well as Supreme Court, has on any number of occasions confirmed that authority, and Judge Breitkop, when he heard the arguments, believed, found those, that persuasive, he found that the county, the tri-cities, did not put forth any facts...
um, did not put forth any, um, facts, um, to support their argument that it was an improper, that it was improper tax or fee, um, and ruled in favor of the city of Oregon City. So, there you go.
Do you, do you expect any appeals to this? Doesn't sound like it.
I haven't, I, I, you know, the, no judgment has been filed yet, um, and, um, I know that the county has objected to the form of the judgment that was submitted on behalf of, um, and that's up to the judge to decide how he wants a particular judgment to read. Um, and I can't speak, I, since I don't represent the county, I represent, we represented Oregon City in this case. And so, we'll have to see how, how they proceed. Um, I would probably urge them, if they listen to us, not to do that because I don't think that's necessarily a wise expenditure of, um, ratepayer dollars, um, but that's entirely up, up to them.
I thought it was a pretty, I mean, as you're probably right, it was, is a pretty decisive win.
Seems very clear.
Yeah. It was pretty decisive.
So, in your opinion, do you think all other cities are going to start along that same line then? So, for instance, if Oregon City pulled water out of our side of the river and then went through our town and pumped it over there, we could start charging them, or anybody else that was doing something similar?
Well, what I was, when I look at it, how, how I try to look at these, these fees, this is essentially, these are, this is essentially rent, okay? Um, and you have to understand, as a home rule jurisdiction, as a municipality, with those, with that authority granted you in the constitution, you have a wide range of powers, okay? Um, and as to your example, if, if, if Oregon City had a water line that was located in your streets and you wanted to charge them a fee for the use of that right-of-way, you could, okay? Um, so, there is, there is, there is that. Now, obviously, that's a legal answer, okay, in terms of authority and power. There are other issues that come into play, obviously, there's political issues and intergovernmental cooperation, and, um, it becomes, at a certain point, um, you have to realize kind of that what I'll say is the, hopefully, just the friendly tension between those two things. And you're able then to reach some sort of a compromise, um, so that it doesn't turn into basically a battle of fee versus fee. Um, and so, I say that, I mean, but in terms of the straight-out authority of the city of Gladstone to impose a fee for use of its right-of-ways, you do have that authority.
Okay.
I was just going to ask, being as we was on Tri-Cities, um, if you, I know, Steve, you're heavily involved in all things Tri-Cities.
Learned way more about sewage than I ever intended to.
Um, is there anything else that, I mean, other than this, that's happened in the last few weeks that you'd like to share with us?
Uh, there is a meeting coming up with Oregon City and Westland to discuss what our positions are on this, and there's another regional wastewater meeting, uh, on July 30th, I believe. Um, in a public meeting, um, the Board of County Commissioners in a public meeting, when they were as, meeting as the Tri-City Service District, uh, County Commissioner Paul Savis did publicly state that he wants to see, be his preference, to see the two sewer districts merged. I'm not sure I agree with Commissioner Savis, but, uh, that was his public, uh, direction. Things, things are moving, um, I would expect to have more to report in the coming weeks.
The other question on that is, I believe the council, um, give you authority to ta, start conversations with SISL?
Have.
And how is that going?
Uh, that is, uh, I assume it's still moving forward, it was supposed to be for this meeting, um, Pat Sisl sent me an email and said he was having troubles getting information from Greg Geist, that he needed to finish the proposal. Uh, Mr. Schultz has, uh, spoken with Mr. Geist, um, and my last communication with Pat Sisl was if there was still a problem with that yesterday, let me know, and I will start digging into it further, I received no email from him. I'm assuming we're going to see that at our next meeting, that, that there will be a proposal for a, a flow meter study.
I believe it was back in May, we discussed IGA between, uh, Tri-City and Clackamas, was it CCSD number one?
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, that was to expire end of June. Whatever happened with that? Because I know the county was butting at the, the bit to get that, uh, extended?
You know, it was, it was a minor, it was not as major as we thought it was going to be, it was something else.
Oh, okay.
Um, I could look at Lance all across the room, and I, I don't know if he remembers what that was, but it was fairly minor. It was not what we thought it was.
I see, okay.
So.
Did it get renewed?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Item number 13. City of Lake Oswego slash Tiger Borderline Partnership requests approval of exception to noise code for nighttime construction.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, uh, this is a, this was an amended agenda item, um, uh, submitted to me by the city of Lake Oswego. Uh, I put together a staff report, but I think you guys probably have a whole lot more history on this than I do, so forgive me if it, uh, isn't succinct. Uh, I think the issue is, they would like to, uh, get a noise variance so that they can cross from roughly Exeter, is that right, Exeter, through to, uh, I'm trying to remember the next name, Cross River Road?
Yeah.
Jensen. Jensen. In that, we have, uh, the ability to choose or not to choose to grant the noise variance for getting across the, the, um, the two vendors lots that they have to cross. We do not have the right to exclude them from working on ODOT property that's accepted, so, uh, we don't have the right to, to, to do anything there. And we do have the right to, um, dictate how to get across River Road, and, uh, so, and both of those, by the way, are an administrator's choice or an administrator's, uh, rule, but I'm kind of kicking this upstairs to you with the, uh, political, uh, political charge that this may or may not have. So, with that, I guess, um, I would take, uh, I believe I wrote, uh, uh, I think I wrote, oh, I didn't, did I write an authorization for this? I don't think I did, I think. I'm sorry.
So, since there is going to be a lot of discussion, do you guys want to do the motion now and second it, or do you want to have the discussion, a discussion first? How do you want, I mean?
Discussion first.
I'm finding stuff. All right. Start at your end.
One of my biggest concerns with this is, um, I looked at a map and I drove around down in the area. Um, what I'm seeing in their report is they have contacted two people. I think this night work is probably going to affect over 100 people. Um, this is going to be happening during the middle of summer, the warmest part of the summer, windows are going to be open, and you've probably got close to 100 residents. I mean, construction noise during the middle of the day does not travel as far as it does between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. And there's been no contact with any of the residents. I drove down to the end of Exeter yesterday, and it appears that there may be houses and possibly bedroom windows within 20 feet of where they're going to be excavating all night long. And I don't see anything here where they've made any contact with any of those people. It's, we're going to do public outreach after the fact of getting a noise variance. Based on my experience on the planning commission and what they proposed in design review to the planning commission, and then, um, what they presented to the county, I don't have a lot of trust that they're going to follow through on this. And they've contacted two people that they're going to have to deal with, and left a large number of them that are going to be very adversely affected for over, for around 60 days is what they're requesting. Uh, if I don't get any sleep for 60 days, uh, I'm going to have a problem. I don't happen to be that close, but I do with, live within a half a block of Exeter Street, and I know what the noise level has been for the time they've done the open excavation, the paving and all of that. Uh, I'm really concerned about our residents and the noise level and the length of time.
Mr. Mayor? I'm sorry to break you.
That's fine.
Uh, I, probably point of order and my mistake, so forgive me, but I should introduce Lake Oswego, who is here right now, that's Joel Kamerek sitting in, uh, in the audience. Do you want to introduce your staff with you, Joel? At this time, you should at least know they're out there and you, a resource if you want to answer questions.
And so, I have a, so my question, and just kind of trying to get this wrapped up, do you guys want to present first, or you just want to hear the concerns and then come up and address them after? I mean, it's your, what do you think?
We'll defer to you, Mayor, however you'd like to, to do.
You want to get everything out on the table and they can go off and try to pick them off and then see where we sit, how's that?
I just wanted to make sure you knew they're out there and introduce them, I think that's.
All right, after we're done, then you guys come up and, you know, introduce staff and then, you know, pick away at what you hear, what you think you might be able to, you know, call them or whatever.
Forgive me, forgive me for not doing that first, please.
All right.
Uh, the, the other concern I have is, um, they've been to the property owners and got what they want, they've went to the, uh, the property owners where they have to work on-site. Um, they've been to ODOT, and all of these people have set up the parameters that they have to work in, and now they're asking us to make variances for our residents to allow them to do their job. It appears from the report that was sent to the Parks Department that most of this could have been, uh, possibly considered an operator error that created the problem. And I don't understand how that becomes a hundred or so Gladstone residents' problem. And those, those are my biggest concerns with it.
Do you, Mr. Tom?
I'll go on with those comments, or Kim's comments.
All right.
Um, but the, the one question I had, Council Sigmund, was you mentioned they talked to two people, or two groups.
Right.
Were they residential or commercial?
What I'm reading is they were both commercial, it was the car lot that they have to do an open cut through, and I believe it's, uh, a coffee barn or ter, I, I know it's, I usually get teriyaki there, but I believe the name is the Coffee Barn.
Right.
Um, and those are the only two things that I can see where they've had any contact with anybody, is the two, uh, businesses.
Okay, and I've got a equal concern that, that the residential people weren't discussed with or talked to or whatever, it's just the commercial was, who the noise won't really affect in the first place. End of discussion.
So, Neil's got a sign here that says, "Be Nice." Probably should have one myself. Um, since, uh, since Lake Oswego has invaded our fine city, and I do mean that, um, it has destroyed a bridge, has disrespectfully and arrogantly done an end-around of our planning commission on design review standards for a, a pump station, has turned our nice park into, uh, an industrial worksite, and now wants to disrupt our neighbors' sleep for two months and destroy our newly paved McLaughlin Boulevard. If I look at the, uh, April 16th memo from Mr. Kamerek, um, it quite honestly looks like the Three Stooges got loose and ran industrial equipment, made one mel of a house. I think that you guys need to come up with a better solution, and you need to start showing us more respect instead of walking all over us, because I'm tired of it.
You muzzled their head there, Mr. Reisner.
I, I concur with, uh, my colleagues. I do have one question as to how, um, Lake Oswego can bore about 100 feet or so on a, on a river, move along about 1,000 feet to the other side, um, without any major problems that, that I'm aware of, but they can't go 600 feet across, uh, McLaughlin. And I also have concerns about trust, huge concerns about trust. I also was on the planning commission with Mr. Sigmund when promises were made that had been broken. We have to put up with that structure at the end of the Portland Avenue for a long time, which is nothing like what you promised, me sitting right there.
Okay.
Couple of years ago. Thank you. I'm trying, I'm trying to be nice.
Mr. McMahon?
Well, I hate to be the pea in the pod here, but, um, Caluchio Construction has been fantastic. I live on Bellevue Avenue, I am very happy with the work that has gone on. Lake Oswego had a right to do, uh, a new tower to use the water. Um, I think that they came to the city five, six years ago and made agreements with the city that a lot of councilors are unhappy with now, that's too bad. You guys came, made agreements, we have to live with them. Um, I think we need to stop making this harder than it has to be. You guys have the right to finish that water line, you've got it at Exeter, you've got it in the park, we really shouldn't be holding it up anymore for hostage or for money, I'm surprised we didn't ask for any more money yet. Um, and I don't think there's anything else we can do. I'm perfectly all right to get this done so that you guys can get the water line completed and you can be out of the city. So, I have to disagree with the majority of the council, but I think we need to move forward, get this done, get the pipeline finished. We can't hold it up, it's going to go to litigation if we start holding it up too long, um, just to make a point.
I, I would like to, if I could say one.
No.
No?
Okay.
Get one shot at it, Neil.
Okay, well, it's going to be a compliment, but that's okay.
We could go on and on. So, I'll weigh in and then we'll have Lake Oswego kind of address anything you think you can address and, and we'll move on from there. Uh, I too, uh, have taken a different look in this. I, I basically understand the heartburn and the passion for where this might have went off the rails, but as I've said to the other councilors, and I'll say it again, some of the prior issues that we are dealing with, gentlemen, the train has left the station. There's nothing we can do about it. Uh, we just need to move on. We need, uh, our attorney there had talked about, you know, partnerships and trying to be decent neighbors, and I would submit that maybe this is a good time to take the high road, to basically say, hey, you know, do us a solid, do this right, start making, start making these things, uh, work. Another thing I would add is, would you guys be as worked up if this was PGE going across McLaughlin or Northwest Natural Gas asking for the same exact thing, uh, just, and would it be the same response? And I think if you honestly thought about it, I doubt there would be that much passion behind it. So, I too say, you know, what's done is done, um, and, and I think I, I would be okay with them getting the nighttime, uh, variance to move on and get this done. I don't believe that these guys are just, you know, they hired just Joe Schmo off the street and he made a mistake and so now we got to pay for it, I, I don't believe that. They got millions and millions of dollars tied up in this project, they're not going to just leave it to chance. If they're saying they can't drill any further, I believe them. I mean, they're not going to invest that kind of money to say, ah, well, we don't want to drill anymore, we're going to do open pit. That's just my take on it. So, with that being said, um, Lake Oswego, if you're welcome to introduce yourselves and address anything you want to address, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Jacobellus, and did I pronounce that right?
Yeah.
Because I've got one of those last names too, that's, uh, tough to, tough to get out sometimes, and thank you, council. Um, many of you I've met before, I've presented before you, uh, before, I appreciate your emotion and your passion about this issue. Um, yeah, we're in your community. Um, yeah, we're in your community. We're in West Lynn's community, we're in Tigard's community, we're in our community. And the impacts are spread throughout all four communities. We've got pipelines and major reservoirs and structures and water treatment plants that are being constructed in all four of those communities. And we have set out at the very beginning to, with a goal of being the best neighbor that we can. Um, and I believe in my heart that we are being the best neighbor that we can. We have done a lot for Gladstone, we have done a lot for West Lynn and Tigard, and quite frankly, uh, West Lynn and Gladstone are getting benefits in excess of what our own citizens in Lake Oswego and Tigard are getting, because they're the beneficiaries of this directly, but there are indirect beneficiaries too. Gladstone being one of those. We have, will have one of the most resilient water supply systems in the region. Uh, recently, the mayor was sent a letter by the Chair of the Clackamas River Water Providers expressing a willingness, on the part, on behalf of Lake Oswego, to donate a significant portion of our infrastructure for the use of Gladstone and other water providers on this side of the river for emergency supply purposes. We have, uh, an amazingly beneficial asset that's in the ground now, that was built back in the late sixties, that we have determined is extremely valuable to bringing water from the west side of the region over to this side of the river. And our brethren on the river, the Clackamas River Water Providers, believe that this is one of the most important opportunities to come before this, uh, group of water providers on this side of the river in decades. Looking at what it costs us to put a pipe across the river and what we're willing to offer basically for free to Gladstone and the other Clackamas River Water Providers, I think is a huge deal. So I would ask you to consider that in your deliberations on our request tonight. With respect to some of the comments that, that, uh, Councilor Sickman and Mercero and Reisner said, so, you're right, we haven't contacted a wide range of neighbors yet. We did that intentionally. It wasn't until we were able to secure easements from the two private property owners that we knew that we could even, uh, implement this option. That had to come first. In your packets tonight, Katie Fulton, our Public Relations Officer, included a public relations plan and a, and an approach to communicating with your residents about how we would inform them about the upcoming construction, assuming that you approve our request. And the intention always was that we would not begin reaching out to those residents and get them all excited about something that may not happen if we could not get the easements from the two private property owners. So that was planned all along. We, with your approval of our request, we will immediately, uh, implement that plan. Uh, Katie can come up and talk about the contacts that she's had already with residents at Exeter Street and along Jensen, the Mobile Home Park. We've already had discussions with them, not about the night work, I agree, but that can happen tomorrow. If you want it to, we can do it tomorrow. Uh, with respect to the noise and the night work, yes, it's noisy, I agree. Um, and had we had any other, if there was another way that we could've completed this as originally planned with the tunnel, you can be sure we would. I mean, we'd be done by now. And our goal is to get this work done as quickly as possible, get out of your community as soon as possible. And right now, given the fact that our contractor is telling us, despite repeated attempts to continue advancing this tunnel, that it just can't be done due to the ground conditions, that we believe this is the best option to get it done as quickly and efficiently as possible and then get out of your community. Councilor Reisner, you talked about us destroying a bridge.
I didn't mention a bridge.
Yeah, I have.
Uh, missed, excuse me, Councilor Hinson.
John Johnson.
Somebody can prove that, then, uh, go ahead.
Cause and effect.
Uh, well, the fact that we're here, and we've been here for fifty years with an intake on the river, and all of a sudden that bridge decided to drop after a decade of Gladstone residents, Gladstone councilors, all kinds of people bringing it to the attention of the railroad, that those footings were seriously undermined, and we have plenty of documentation to back that up.
You built a coffer dam and you diverted the flow right into the cases.
Well, I'm--
Steve, we've had our opportunity to let these gentlemen--
I've heard this before, I don't--
Okay.
And so, I don't wanna spend my time arguing that point. The bridge is down, it's gone regardless of cause, but, um, I don't believe it had anything to do with our project. We did not violate planning commission regulations or rules or approvals. We built what we said we would build, and, uh, let Gladstone counsel, legal counsel, opined that we did not, that the record showed in a subsequent submittal that we built, we were going to build what you see out there today. So I'll leave that at that. Um, I'm here, we have our contractor here who can talk about questions about the microtunnel and why it was stymied from further completion and why we think our solution is the best option. I've got Katie Fulton here tonight to talk about our public relations plan and how we intend to implement that. I don't know that I have anything more to say. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. I'm happy to ask our contractor or Katie to come up and answer any questions you have within their area of expertise. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. The contractor? I just, I just, if you could give us a sense, uh, I think it's a hundred and eighty-five feet worth of drilling, somewhere in that neighborhood or something, and then it went awry, how much time we talking, how much, you know, effort and energy is there now, basically?
Uh, we basically, like Joel said--
Can we get your name, please?
My name is Jeff Argov with Frank Caluchio Construction.
Thank you.
Um, we've, uh, done everything we could as far as the drilling is concerned. We have, uh, forty years of experience with, uh, microtunneling. Our operator has twenty years of experience, uh, almost without fail. Um, sometimes in construction, uh, things happen, and in this case, we've tried and we've tried and, uh, eventually we had to say, "We have to do it another way." Um, it just wasn't possible to continue. Uh, our alignment was, uh, was off way too much, and, uh, we just got stuck. Uh, we, we encountered, uh, very large boulders that, uh, we did not anticipate. Sometimes that happens with all the geotechnical investigation you're doing, sometime you, you just can't see what's under there. And in our case, unfortunately, this is what happened. Um, at this point, you know, we sat with, uh, uh, Lake Oswego-Tigard Water Partnership and, and looked at our options. We thought about, uh, all the available solutions, including other means of boring underneath, uh, the property. Uh, the only option that is really left as far as going underneath is, uh, hand mining, uh, just getting a big tunnel under there and, and, uh, eventually getting on this side. However, this is very disruptive and would take, uh, a long time, and, um, we, we decided it's, uh, it's not gonna be in anybody's best interest if we do that.
How much time, how much time, so they're gonna go whatever it was, a hundred and eighty, a hundred and eighty feet underground. How, how much time was it? Two weeks worth of work, four weeks, three? I don't know, I'm just asking.
Uh, if I recall, it was about two weeks of, uh, of, um, of mining. We, uh, we encountered, uh, a few stoppage, uh, instances throughout, uh, we, when we hit, uh, a large boulder and, uh, this or that happened, and, and eventually we, we just ground to halt. Uh, we had an opportunity to perhaps, uh, continue pushing, but our alignment was so out of whack at that point that, uh, it, we all decided that we just, uh, should abandon what we're doing. Uh, there was no way to reach the other end, uh, in the way we were going, so, um, the, the, the available method at this point, which puts us a few weeks behind schedule, is the open cut. And, um, unfortunately, uh, we believe this is, this is the, the least, uh, damage we can--
I have a question, if you want me.
Go ahead.
Um, in a email from Mr. Comerick to Scott Taber and some other people dated April sixteenth, ultimately forwarded to us by peak voice, there were three options. One of them was to excavate and straighten sixty to eighty feet of the misaligned casing and then continue the MTBM, uh, if possible, across the car dealership lot, uh, to the west of Highway ninety-nine, excavate a shaft, remove the MTBM, then cross under ninety-nine E and the coffee shop parking lot using a trenchless method, uh, other than, uh, microtunneling, e.g., auger bore to the tie-in location in Extra Street. Further down, it says that under analysis, uh, FCCC, I believe that's you--
Yes.
--considers option two preferable to option one, but not without risk.
Yes.
Uh, you've changed your mind since then?
Um, on the counsel of, uh, Lake Oswego's, uh, consultant, we decided that that method would be just as risky, if not more risky. So, uh, we could've, potentially have tried that, but if we would've gotten stuck again, uh, that would've, uh, increased, uh, the impact, uh, by a factor of two at least.
In what way?
Well, we would have to basically replace the two machines and waste a lot of more time in, in Gladstone. And we'd like to get it done as soon as we can to get out of here and leave you alone.
So it's not cost-effective, is what you're saying then?
Um, at this point, everything is more expensive. It's, we, we just need to get it done, uh, as, as soon as possible. Uh, none of these methods are cost-effective anymore.
Okay.
But we are going to finish the job.
But you could do it a different way with less noise, using another method.
No, but it might not be successful, is what they're saying. That's, that's the downside to it, and then you're right back to square one.
Yeah, the, the major issue is the ground condition. Um, uh, the, the boulder size is exactly the wrong size for, for microtunneling or auger boring, as, as far as that's concerned. Um, it's, uh, it's, uh, just the right size to where it, it can really get lodged in, in the auger and, uh, and create another stoppage. And, uh, sometimes that happens.
I wanna thank you. Uh, I've got a couple of friends that live along the route, um, that you've been, you know, laying the pipe, and, uh, they have had nothing but high praise for your company and your workers. Uh, one thing in particular is, um, the language that you, your workers use, or in, in fact, actually, uh, the colorful language that they're not using. Uh, being a teacher and a parent and grandparent, um, it was refreshing to hear that they weren't having to put up with profanity, which is fairly common on, uh, construction sites that I've been on in the past. And being in the summertime with kids running around, uh, I wanna thank you and, uh, and your company for, um, being, uh, you know, extremely professional in every regard. Thanks.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Comerick, do you want anybody else, or?
Did, did you wanna hear any more about our communications plan? Was that still a question in your minds? If not, I don't know--
They satisfied you? Tim? I mean, his response, or do you want the public--
Well--
It's in your packet, our--
Yeah, yeah, I went through that. Um, no, I think I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just--
Thank you.
So, so that the council is aware, under the terms of your code, there's certain criteria that you have to consider, just like when you're dealing with any sorts of decisions of whether it's a land use decision or not. And I'm just gonna ask you to focus on what those are. Um, it says, "The conditions for the grant in the city council may grant specific variances from the particular requirements of any rule, regulation or order to such specific persons or class of persons or such specific noise source upon such conditions as it may deem necessary in this, to protect the public health and welfare. If it finds that strict compliance with such rule, regulation or order is inappropriate because of conditions beyond the control of the persons requesting such variance or because of special circumstances which would render strict compliance unreasonable or impractical due to special physical conditions, or caused or because strict compliance would result in substantial curtailment or closing down of a business plant or operation, or because no alternative facility or method of handling is yet available." So, you have to focus on those, and, and I realize there's, you know, I, this is my first time here in front of this particular council. I understand your concerns about other issues that were raised, but those are not conditions that you can actually consider when considering this request for the variance. You have to focus on the public health and welfare, not on what happened maybe in the past, um, and then if they meet any of those, if you can say, "Well, they also meet some of these other criteria," and I'm not gonna weigh in on whether you think that they do or they don't, but those are the criteria that you should be focusing on when you're considering whether to grant or deny it, okay?
Is there a way to, that, that last portion, the exceptions, or what we have to weigh on? Is there a way to maybe restate it, or is there's no way to put it up on the, on the chart or anything? Can you just run that through--
Sure, I'll be, I'll be happy to.
Yeah.
And I'll try to--
Okay.
--shorten that up. Um, what you can, you can consider is because of conditions beyond the control of the persons requesting such variance--
Okay.
--two, because of special circumstances which would render strict compliance unreasonable or impractical, due to special physical conditions, which I think there's been some testimony about special physical conditions, or because strict compliance would result in substantial curtailment or closing down of a operation, uh, or because no other alternative facility or method of handling is yet available. So, what it's speaking to is hardship, not caused by the applicant for the variance. And so I think what you've heard from this applicant, um, is they believe that they have met, they have set out some facts in front of the council which meet that. Um, you can impose conditions on them for addressing what I'll say is a public health and safety concern, which has also been raised about noise, about because of the, the increase in noise. You can focus your attention on that, but the other things that you can't focus on whether, you know, and I'm not trying to put words in folks' mouths, other concerns that may predate this, this request, that are essentially unrelated to it. What you're here to focus on is the noise that's going to be created, and is that noise being created a result of acts that they are actually under control of? What you've heard, I've, at least, my understanding of what I've heard, um, is that they were not under the, that's not under their control. And so they've stated essentially that case. And you can put conditions, say, "Well, if you're gonna work between these hours and these hours, a decimal level, you have to do certain things to minimize the noise" or something along those lines. You can address your concerns that way. That's, that's what I'm trying to take, but I'm trying to put some constraints around what you should be focusing your attentions on.
And, and just so I'm clear, where, where are you, where's that coming from, the municipal code?
I am. I'm reading straight from the municipal code, um, eight twelve oh seven oh, um, which is, um, that, and it deals specifically with variances.
Now, is that the requirements to allow a variance?
Yes.
Is there a requirement?
To consider. Those are the considerations that you are, that you are to take into account when analyzing the granting of a variance.
Can I ask one question?
But there's no requirement--
No.
Well, not this, Mayor.
Authorized.
We're only, have these people involved in the process that are directly involved, and we ask questions of them, and they could respond to the issues we raise. I mean, this is just a discussion for us. This isn't, as, as far as I'm seen, it's not open for public discussion.
Well, I don't know. I mean, I disagree. I think I disagree as well.
So, anyone in the audience could've talked to us about this issue?
Well, I mentioned probably a hundred, a hundred residents that may be involved in this, and they haven't even been noticed of this.
But it's different from notifying them than having them appear for public discussion. I mean, it's just, it's not on this agenda, it's just--
It's just, we invited these people to address your concerns because there was concerns built up ahead of time. They addressed those concerns. You had the opportunity to talk to them, and now we're at a point where we've been advised by a lawyer about what our constraints or what our variances might, may or may be able to do, and I don't know why we wouldn't invite public discussion. It just doesn't seem to me like we need it. We've got everything we asked for, we asked for from these people who are doing the project. Mr. Schultz, do you have an opinion on this, about opening this for public discussion?
I think that's, you know, that's within your preview, but you've got a, you've got an agenda item in front of you, so, I mean, you've really got to deal with that at this point, and, you know, public testimony wasn't part of this. I mean, it's not required. Obviously, council's got plenty of latitude to go where you guys want to as a group, but I think that's-
There is a requirement under, there is a requirement under the code for public notification and public hearing. That's what, that provision starts out. It says, "Public notice shall be given in a manner provided by city ordinance for all variance applications." I looked, you know, quickly this afternoon for if there was a general ordinance that dealt with variance applications. I didn't find one. I'm assuming just that the notice that was given about the agenda item, that might qualify as notice, and it says, "A public hearing shall be held before the granting of a variance if such hearing is requested by any affected party." Now, then, I'm trying to decide, I mean, in reading this, who is an affected party? And I assume it would be one, the applicant would be one. And that is, that's it, if it was requested, and that's only if it's a, if the hearing has been requested by an affected person. Now, you may take a different, you are sitting in your capacity as, what else, a quasi-judicial body right now, and so, you can, you can say, "I, we think an affected party may be other people as well," and I'll leave that to you to make that call. I don't think that's an unreasonable interpretation of the code, because it talks about a public hearing and such, and it, there may, there are effects, there are other people who may be affected by the granting of the variance, but is ultimately the granting or denial of variance is solely in your purview, okay? So, you can decide whether or not you say you want to accept testimony from other, what else, say, for lack of a better term, interested persons who may want to comment on the wisdom or folly of the granting of a variance, or what conditions you may want to consider. I'll leave that to you. As Ross said, you know, it's, to a certain extent, you own the ballpark, so therefore you can decide what the rules are. And, but, I lay that out. I mean, so, there is a, there is an allowance for a public hearing. It's allowed if there's an affected party who requests it. As far as I know, no one other than the applicant has appeared. If the council then nonetheless wants to say, "Listen, we want to allow for public comment about this by people we may be, who may be able to identify how they may be affected by this," that's fine. I think people generally, that might not be what would qualify as an affected person, though.
And if I may, I think if you do have that hearing, you ought to talk about the criteria that you must contemplate this under as opposed to just a broad conversation about all of the wrongs that Lake Oswego have caused over the years. It's got to be about, you know, why you would grant or deny this variance.
Right.
Go ahead. Can you clarify for me, because I'm, this is listed as a discussion item in the agenda, and that's the way it would have went out as public notice, because the public notice was the notice of the meeting.
True.
So, it's not listed as a public hearing. Does that run us afoul that if it's not listed as a public hearing, then we can't have a public hearing? If we choose to take testimony, that's fine, but it wasn't noticed as a public hearing, so it really isn't a public hearing, and so, we can't make a decision tonight anyway?
I understand what you, I think I understand where you're going, Counselor. I think a public hearing shall be held, there's a requirement, that's how it reads, "Before the granting of a variance if such hearing is requested by an affected party." You don't have to have a public hearing, in other words, unless it's requested.
So, you didn't even know about it?
But I was going to say, you've got hundreds of people out there that didn't know that they're going to be making all kinds of noise at two or three o'clock in the morning. I mean, I was down there this afternoon, and they're, you know, cutting away with a saw. That's, you know, and another question I have, was this put at the end of the agenda, the whole thing, because it was brought at the last minute, so it ended up as a discussion item? Or should it have been put as maybe a seven point five under the regular agenda?
I think it should have been under the regular agenda. That's my fault, and I can't do anything but-
Oh, no, no, I understand that, but I'm just saying for, I mean, we're all getting to know each other here.
Sure.
And for, you know, as to how, you know, how we-
Procedural error at that point.
Well, I'm not saying it's an error. I'm just saying we're, you know, we're learning.
I think there are a lot of affected people that have no idea that this is coming, and I think that we ought to give them an opportunity to speak. If it's not this evening, then we ought to look at a future meeting. Okay. So, let me, let me ask you, what is the major difference between the decision we had to make on the cell phone tower and this decision? We had a certain set of criteria we had to operate under, and if it makes you feel good to have people talk about it, but you still have to decide under that criteria, then okay, bring them in. I don't believe that's true.
But it is the same principle.
It's not.
No, because on the cell phone tower, the feds say you have to approve it, but you can put some conditions. This, we don't have to approve. They can still get their pipe through. It might not be easier. It might not be cheaper, but they, but they still can get it through if we don't approve this.
But you would have to operate and make that decision based on what the attorney told us regarding the variances.
Right.
That the conditions are, you have to find, or we have to find, that those conditions are not beyond their control or circumstances, and they're not, you know, no method is yet available, that it's not unreasonable or impractical and physical. So, that's what you have to decide. It's not based on whether people are going to lose sleep.
It is based on whether people lose sleep, first of all, because that does affect the health and welfare of our Gladstone residents. Secondly, a variance can be approved or denied, and I have no problem with them doing the open cuts that they want to do. If they choose that that's the best way to do it, I don't believe the only option they have is night work. That's been imposed on them by a business owner or by two business owners. You will have to deal with ODOT, and they may impose night work only, and they may have the authority to do that. But two business owners do not have the authority to tell Gladstone City Council that they have to approve a variance that's going to affect a hundred people, or whatever that number is. They don't have that authority.
I don't think they claim they have that authority. I think you're reading into it that they believe they have that authority.
Yes, oh, I said- If you're saying the only option they have is to do the open cut during the middle of the night, that is exactly what you're saying. I don't have an issue with the open cut. If that's what they need to do, do it. That's fine. I have an issue with the noise variance for the middle of the night that's going to affect many of our residents.
Okay, gentlemen, so, we've kind of beaten this thing up, and so now, where are we going with this? You want to have, Ross, you wanted to weigh in something?
Yeah, I just, I have a resolution before you that I'm, that staff is requesting, and even though it may actually be appearing in the wrong portion of the agenda, you guys can make that resolution if you wish, and if you don't wish, then no resolution, but that's, that's what's before you.
Okay. All right. Yes, sir. Somebody else said something?
No.
If it's agenda, I can't ask one question.
No. If we're going to bring this back, if you guys are going to bring this back to talk about it some more and bring people in to talk to you about it, then we'll have it at that time. If you're not going to make the motion to make this thing, to provide this resolution to make it happen, then it dies here, and then he's got to re-manufacture it and bring it back, and then you can have it for public discussion and all of that. So, that's what I'm hearing. No one's going to make a motion to approve this resolution.
Well, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that we do approve the noise variance so that they can finish the project and move on.
And no second, I can't second.
Why not?
Okay. I'm getting a shake no, so I can't second it.
Yeah, you can.
You can.
Oh, we can?
You're a member of the council.
All right. Well, I second the motion.
If nothing else, it just puts it on the, puts it out there to talk about.
Yeah, now you got the question, and you can talk.
Okay. So, the motion was made by Counsel McMahon, was seconded by Mary Jake Bellis, and now it's open for discussion? Any further discussion here?
Yes, I have some, in that I'm not sure, I'm really opposed to them making noise. What I was opposed to, and what I brought up earlier, or actually Counsel Sigmund brought up, and I agreed with, that two people were notified, and a hundred or whoever number it is weren't talked to. He also indicated to us that the plan was to do the first two and then communicate with the rest of the group. I'm not sure I really got a problem with the noise variance, as long as the other residents that are going to have the problem are communicated with. I'm sure they may have suggestions in their opposition or whatever, but they can work through that, Lake Oswego can work through that, and solve the problem if possible. So, for that, my opinion is I would approve the noise variance, okay, if that happened, if that discussion happened, and they earnestly tried to communicate with the residents.
What's your definition of communicate? And the reason I ask that is I'm seeing a lot of things, we're going to notify them by email, we're going to notify them by this. There's nothing in there about any mitigation of the sound. The only thing I'm seeing in the information is we're going to get the word out, and we're going to tell them that we're going to be noisy for sixty days, and they're not going to have anything to say about it because we've already approved the variance. I would like to see that communication happen prior to the approval of the variance. I mean, if we've got a seventy percent, if you take five hundred feet or whatever the most affected people, and seventy percent of them say, "Hey, we understand. We don't have an issue with it," then far be it for me to have an issue with it. But when they haven't even had the opportunity to weigh in on it, and after the fact, the only thing they're going to do is be notified that they're going to have to deal with it, I have an issue.
I agree.
One of the things that you may want to consider to do that is have the applicant come back with measures that they're going to take to mitigate the noise, because I think that's essentially what the variance would be. I mean, you can say, "Okay, here's a decibel level that you're allowed under the terms of your code during nighttime and daytime hours," okay? And you can say, so they're asking, "We want to be granted essentially some leeway with that particular number." You can ask the applicant to come up and say, "In what ways will you attempt to mitigate that?" Because I think that would then go, Counsel Sigmund, to your question about the noise, the noise level, and that would then be addressing the issues that the noise code is essentially trying to affect, which is the volume or the decibel level, not necessarily the volume, but the decibel level. So, you can say, what, and then they can say, "When we come back, that one of the things that we want to see is have you tell us, in what ways can you mitigate this to the most practically, so that you can continue with your project?" In other words, what I'm trying to get you to focus on are things that address the thing that you're trying to deal with, which is noise mitigation for this project for the time period. And so, you can say to the applicant, "Okay, what are you going to do? How is that going to be, how are you going to try to do that?" Granted, they may meet these other criteria that, you know, for granted, not, they can produce, adduce facts in front of you to show that they, many of these things are outside of their control, but there still is potentially a larger harm, which your code is meant to address. And you say, "So, how are you going to try to address that, that larger harm, which is the noise?" And when they come back, they come, and they present, they can present that to you, and then you can say, "That's enough," and, or not. I mean, I think that's how, and I'm not trying to direct how you're trying to make the decision, but if that is what, when you're looking at what the noise code is supposed to do, what noise codes are supposed to do, and why variances are there, because everybody recognizes you can't always comply, that's, that's, that's the tension that you're trying to meet, and so, those are the things that you may want to ask the applicant to show.
And I think that may be where the difference is, is because, in my opinion, I believe that they can comply. I believe there's a possibility that they can comply and not need the variance for the nighttime work. That's where fundamentally I am with it.
And if they, and if they can show that they can't, you know, given practically speaking, I mean, there's just no way to muffle some of those sounds, you may, they may be able to convince you that, "Well, we can't comply at all times with these-"
No, I'm referring to the hours of work, not to the level of sound. The hours of work is what I think that they possibly can comply with, that we wouldn't need to allow the variance.
Okay. Kins and I have about the noises, my understanding, we don't have any means of measuring how much noise they make, according to our police department.
We could require them to measure that noise and certify it, so, I mean, that's, that's a doable issue.
Any, any other discussion? That? Good? Okay, so, we have the motion made by McMahon, Counsel McMahon, seconded by the mayor. We had a discussion, so, time to vote on. Let me see if I can find it.
You probably want to call the roll, Mayor.
If I can find it, hold on.
I know the, the number.
I don't know if there was a, so, Ross?
There isn't, there's not a number, but staff has a recommended motion for you on page thirteen dash one in your packet.
Right, right, I got it.
So-
The motion's already been made, though.
Right, to direct staff to issue the requested Lake Oswego target variances and permits in accordance with city code. So, it's a motion been seconded, and we had the discussion. Jolene, you want to take the roll call?
Sure. Counsel Sigmund.
No.
Counsel Richerow.
No.
Counsel Johnson.
No.
Counsel McMahon.
Yes.
Counsel Reisner.
No.
Mayor Jacobella.
Yes. Okay, the motion was deposed, and, oh.
I guess this is where I'm going to talk to Lake Oswego and see if they want to bring another motion before you. Are there any conditions that would let you entertain another motion that we could talk about?
I'd like to hear what you come up with, and would you like to see us move on at this point? It would be my request.
As I-
Move on to what? To our next agenda item. I think that was it. And let Mr. Schultz have that discussion.
Well, I think he's looking for parameters on what, what you guys would like to see if we brought this up in a motion again, that you have-
If I may paraphrase, I'd, I'd like to give that a shot, if I can go ahead and, one, you'd like to have some public involvement for the no votes, I believe, I think I heard. If I were to work with Lake Oswego and get that public involvement before you next time with a similar motion, I think I also heard that you'd like to examine other ways- other ways other than after dark work. I think that's what I heard Counselor Sickman say, is that correct? And, you know, I get back to the criteria that you've gotta do, if it's, if they can demonstrate that's not possible, then I think you have to consider noise at night, otherwise the project never gets done. And so, there's, there's that criteria you've gotta consider, and they've gotta prove to you that there's no, uh, other way to get this done. Is that, is that what I'm hearing from you, counselor?
Right, and if that, if that would be the case, I would like to see, um, our engineers look at their information to verify, I mean, if we're only getting one side of a story-
Yeah, I agree.
Um, and I'm not a professional engineer, so-
Okay.
Um, I'd like to see an independent engineer look at that-
Okay.
-as well, that they cannot do it during the day. I mean, that's, that's my biggest issue. Their constructions-
This is getting recorded?
Construction is going to make noise. It's going to make the same amount of noise during the day as it does at night.
I understand.
So, it's gonna be more at night?
Well, you'll hear it more, but the noise will be the same, but it will travel further.
But the issue is with you, if you can do it during the day, let's figure a way to get it done during the day, or maybe cut the hours of work, maybe it's not after ten o'clock, or, and I'm just-
Well, that's your start time right now.
Yeah, I know it is, but, you know, there's swing shifts, and there's graveyards, and there's all that, so-
Um, the other thing that I would like to see is if we are, if they are going to continue feeling they need the variance, I would like to see it be, um, noticed as a public hearing.
Okay.
With, considering the time of night, it's gonna be probably a thousand feet radius.
Okay. So, they, they would notify a public hearing within a thousand feet radius, and that would satisfy of their work?
Well, what's your land use requirements? I don't think your land use requirements are a thousand feet.
No. But for, but for a variance, we can, can't we, don't we have some latitude if they want us to look at it?
I think, um, the way, if I'm reading, if I'm reading the code, um, let me see. Public notice shall be given in a manner provided for by city ordinance for all variance applications. So, I would suggest, if you were looking for, if you were looking for what I'll say is a parameter for that, you might wanna look to your zoning code and say, okay-
So, I'll research that, I'll come up with that zoning code that's gonna be a parameter in-
For when you have that kind of a public hearing, which I think is probably somewhere in a range of between two hundred or three hundred feet, or something like that.
Yeah.
Typically of a, I think it's two fifty. It's two fifty, so, so I would suggest that that's, maybe they have to give notice, and that you might wanna say to city staff, okay, city staff, here's where the alignment is, note, send out notice.
I mean, that's, that's an easy one, so, we'll do that according to code.
That's the only, I mean, there's no other way. I can't, I could not find another way, place in the code where there was a general variance requirement, so I'm just using that by way of analogy.
So, we've got a couple of things. Public hearing, we've got proof that this is the only way, I mean, they don't have control other, over other factors. Um, what other things did I hear that, uh?
Well, I'm only thinking, and I think Lake Oswego could weigh in on this, I know, I understand why you didn't put the cart before the horse as far as contacting residents, but in light of this, uh, that outreach now, is, is that doable, or is that, you think, worthwhile?
Like, we need to make it doable.
And then-
We will start tomorrow.
And then that piece may take care of everything else. Maybe all a hundred and fifty residents, they make it happen, you know, or, or they might not, so, okay.
And I agree. That's, that's what I was trying to say in the first place.
All right.
Counselor Reisner, is there anything else that you, uh, would like me to consider?
Thank you. It's Reisner.
Reisner, sorry. Deutsche and me, uh, German-
Me before I, except for-
Counselor Johnson.
Reisner or-
I'm not saying German, right.
All right, so, item number thirteen-
Wait, hang on, just a second, I got Counselor Johnson's-
He was asking a question.
Yeah.
Um, I'm trying to take a page from Counselor Mercero's be positive thought process here, so, um, we're here to represent the interests of people of Gladstone, and I think that it's up to the people of Lake Oswego to represent their interests. I don't think it's up to us to solve their problems. And I think they need to come to the city with better solutions, and, and then we can go from there. So, I, I think that's, that's my thoughts on that.
Okay, so, I'm gonna be back on the ballot, sorry, the ballot's on the mind, other issues. I'm gonna be back on the agenda next week with a posted public hearing and this resolution there to follow, and we will see you then. I'll work with Lake Oswego to accomplish the three things I think I heard from council where you have issues.
Is two weeks enough time?
I think it will be, I'd ask Lake Oswego, you heard the size of the issues, I think two weeks is enough to get back on the ballot.
Back on the agenda?
Back on, boy, I'm gonna get on the ballot or else. Back on the agenda.
Okay.
So, the twenty eighth?
Is there any criteria for a public hearing that's notification wise?
No, I can't, I, there was nothing in the code. I mean, the only thing that I would suggest that we look at is basically look at the, look at the zoning code and use that kind of as our, what I'll say is a baseline.
Criteria.
And then we'll, and I'll check on that with Ross over the course of the time, and-
Can we also make sure we get it in a newsletter? I think it should be coming out before the twenty eighth. We'll see what we can do about getting it out. I think, Lake Oswego's gonna send a mailer, so-
Two hundred and fifty feet, but, okay.
Okay, so that's-
That's item number thirteen, it's done.
Item number thirteen.
Lucky number thirteen.
Uh, okay. I think that is it. Business from the council, might as well stay in order. Me, again?
Yes, sir.
You get to be first to what tonight? Uh, Natalie Smith was talking about the festival, she handed out schedules, um, I have got parade applications, um, if the council wishes, I can, I think I can have the city fill one out for the council as a whole, if we would like to march in the parade, or I can give them to everybody individually, um, but I think it would be great if we were all in the parade. I also have extras for anybody that would like to be in the parade. I think we're gonna have a pretty good festival this year. Um, that's all I've got.
Mr. Mercero?
Okay. Uh, with our new interim, CM, working, I'd like to extend my appreciation for what I think's a good thing personally, the weekly reports, uh, it brings about communication about what is happening on a weekly basis, it promotes the department managers to in fact reply and keep track of things, uh, and it's just, it's a good communication process, I think, so, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I would like to welcome Mr. Schultz as our interim city administrator. This is his first meeting, some of this is a little bit trial by fire, I suppose, but you've, you've been through some of these, um, and I wanna say, um, how very impressed I am with the work that he's done for our city in the short time that he's been here. Um, it's, it's amazing how much he has done for us in, in the very few days since he's taken over. Thank you and welcome.
I, I hope you can still say that in December, counselor. Thank you very much.
Mr. Reisner.
Same as what, Steve was, uh, loon to, uh, thank you for coming out of retirement and, uh, and helping us out. It has been, I know, a fast sprint these last couple of weeks, and like Tom mentioned, I, I really enjoyed the, the weekly reports, gives me, you know, insight of what's happening inside. And so, welcome to Gladstone, and, uh, look forward to working with you, you know, over the next few months, and, and like I say, your, your experience, uh, as an interim, uh, I think has been really, uh, oh, I say, it's been needed. Thank you.
I do need an application for my fire engine, and if you guys wanna knock off a World War II veteran, I could probably have you guys ride on it, but if not, I have the senior center on one side, and I don't think you can knock this guy off, so I don't even think you should try, and I have the library foundation on the other side, but it's a big fire engine. If you guys wanna hang off the side instead of walk, you're more than welcome.
Uh, only thing for me is, we need to probably have a discussion maybe next time, or start the process for a temporary appointment to city council, putting that notification out, 'cause we kinda lost that in the sauce. Um, and I think that's about it for me for now. Um, I do think, and we had this discussion before, but I think Ross wants to address the council, and I would also ask Jolene if she had anything she wanted to add to please weigh in, but, uh, that's for me, that's all I've got.
Jolene, why don't you go ahead, and then I'll take last.
I don't have anything to add, except we did notify, uh, everybody in the newsletter about the, uh, appointment for council.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
And we have a couple of applications.
All right, I didn't, I didn't realize that.
So, it's scheduled to be on the August, the first meeting in August agenda.
Okay, thanks.
Perfect. Um, I've got a couple of things. One, I wanted to make sure, public session, we noticed a work session for July twenty second, four o'clock, that's firm now, and everybody's nodding their head, and-
So, that's next Wednesday, correct?
Yeah, that'll be next Wednesday, and, um, I think it'll just be in here, there's no reason not to. Uh, we haven't anticipated public comment on that work session, and it's to talk about, um, the buildings and the civic structures, and more than just the library, but city hall is included in that conversation, police is included in that conversation, possibly public works in that conversation, so, uh, public's always welcome to work sessions, but, uh, that's the conversation at this point, and that may also include an executive session. I need to talk to my attorney friend here and see what our grounds are for that. Um, the last thing I've got is, is really one that, um, I, I could talk to each of you individually, but I think I'd like to hear your comments as a group, as opposed to individually. Um, my model for running the city and, and working with you guys is basically that of a corporation, a board of directors, and a CEO, and, uh, it's important to me that I can have confidential conversations with each of you, and things that don't get to the public necessarily, not that they're not suited for the public, but sometimes timing is a big issue, and, um, I'd like to be able to talk to you about your sense and your feeling, about how the railroad's running, what I can do to make it better, and not all of it needs to be public information. Um, so, I guess at that point, when we have one-on-ones, those kinda things are really confidential, those are CEO, board member communications, and even, uh, there's legal standing for those informations, those conversations to not be discoverable. And, um, so if that's not your expectation, if everything we talk about is gonna be discoverable and gonna be in the public eye, I need to know that, 'cause that will push me to, to manage in a different light. So, I guess I'd love to hear your thoughts and comments on that, uh, on the way I work with you. Yes, sir.
It sounds like your preference would be the confidentiality.
Yes.
Is that, are you saying that you are going to come up with certain topics, and you're gonna say, okay, this needs to be kept confidential, or is it easier to just say, our entire meeting will be confidential from here on out when I'm meeting one-on-one? Because I would like to-
Yeah.
I would like to do things the way you would like to do it, you are a professional manager, and I would like to follow step with that. But I wanna make sure how that's happening, so I don't run afoul myself.
Okay, um, fair, fair question. Um, I think anytime you're in the city manager's office, that stuff stays in the city manager's office, unless we agree that, gee, let's take that forward and get it out on the street. Um, I like to use that opportunity to, I mean, I'm nowhere near always right, and I think I need that reasonableness from each of you. I think that's the process, that's how governments operate, that's how organizations operate. So, if you're in my office, that's confidential until we agree that it needs to be outside.
I have no problem with that at all. I'm okay with that.
Good.
For me.
Been doing this for a couple of years, so I'm gonna trust your judgment on it.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry to bring this out and open session, but I really need that commitment from you guys, so we can keep this thing going forward. Thank you very much. And with that, I'm, I'm done, I got nothing else.
All right, meeting is adjourned. Good night, all.